A minute to spare, but I think we're heading to the meeting. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Potters County Commissioners' Court this April 28th, 2014. We will open up the meeting with a word of prayer, and Ms. Smith, accountant clerk, is going to give us a word of prayer this morning, followed by Brittany and Ann Stigman and Texas.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the opportunity, Lord, together as a county. We just ask that you be with the commissioners this morning as they make decisions for the county and for the taxpayers, Lord. And we ask that you be with each person who works in this county, that you say that we are mindful of the opportunities and the responsibilities that have been given to us. Just be with that throughout this week, Lord, and we continue to ask you to pray, and just God direct us in everything that we do. It's in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Where is the witness stood in the light of the United States of America? And you live in a land where you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, and one country.
Right, the first order on the agenda this morning will be approval of the minutes from the April 14th meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, it's been motion and seconded to accept the minutes as printed. Those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero.
Five zero.
I'm sorry. And passes five zero. Item two, vouchers, and it's to consider an act upon the approval of payments for vouchers processed by the county auditor's office for the period of April 9th, 2014 through April 22nd, 2014, in the amount of a total of checks covering 1-5-5-0-8-0 through 1-5-5-3-1-3, and wire number 3-6-3 through 3-7-2, in the amount of $2,439,229.22.
Second for discussion. Just have a couple of questions for the court. Page number 10 of 27, check number 1-5-5-1-9-1, the amount of $108,804 emergency management agreement. Harry, I just want to confirm, this is our cost sharing with the EOC, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Then on that same page towards the bottom, check number 1-5-5-2-0-4, the amount of $2,050, color ribbon's four, but it's cut off. I'm not sure what that description is.
This is actually print, and those ones are kind of donations that I'm sharing.
Okay, thank you. All the questions I have for the court?
Anyone else? Hearing none, it's been motion and seconded to approve the vouchers with the necessary questions or considerations. Those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero. Item three, insurance report, Mr. Recognize the insurance report. Can you have anything to the sheriff this morning?
Only to ask you to note that last time I mentioned that we were kind of behind on the claims runs. Those have come in, and we are up to date now. The fund is holding well. I'm still working with Bill Morwood, with PAC, to determine contract costs on a large claim specialty mill.
Thank you. Insurance report so recognized. Item four is the treasury report, Mr. Recognize the treasury report, and a monthly cash report, and B, 2014 second quarter investment report. And one.
The main thing I wanted to let you know, we have $10,396,000 this morning in tax pool, $26,000 in tax on crime, $12,121,000 in our checking account, which is earning 25 access points, and then $10 million in our three-month cedars, that's earning 35 access points. This Wednesday, we'll purchase another CD for $3,000, and we'll start our lathering portfolio. Started $10,000, $10 million last month, this month we'll do another three-month, and continue that to last the year.
You said $3,000, did you mean?
$3 million. I was gonna say $1,000, $3 million. And we'll keep that up through the year, so we'll continue earning those. That's our strategy. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, treasury reports so recognized. Item five is Time Clock Plus, Mr. Hear report on Time Clock Plus and take any action necessary.
Morning.
Morning.
As you know, HR and IT are still continuing to utilize the Time Clock Plus. It's going well. We haven't run into any major issues that we haven't been able to resolve yet. We did bring on the second stage. County auditor purchasing and collections have all been trained and began punching this morning on Time Clock Plus. We also have been in communication with treasurer's office, and as soon as we get information from them to build the backend for them, they will come on. Packets that we require in order to build the backend part of Time Clock Plus are being prepared now for the next stage, for the third stage, that will be elections, jury, and tax office. I anticipate that the packets should be completed by the end of this week, and we'll go out to those departments shortly thereafter to gather information from them for the backend of the building for their particular departments. Once we get the information from them and get the backend built, then we'll begin training and implementation for them. Hopefully, in its my anticipation, that we will be able to bring on that third stage by late May. Maybe first we can do, depending upon the flow and if we run into difficulties with this stage that we've just implemented, and then there will move forward with that stage.
Okay, in the first phase, it was IT and HR, is that right? Okay.
I can't hear what you mean by the backend.
Anytime we bring on a department, there is a good deal of information that has to be built into the system, such as you have to establish the users for that department, who those users will be, and build profiles for them. You also have to establish on the backside, who within that department will have specific access to each individual employee within the department. It may be that, especially in some of the larger departments, that you have subgroups within a department, maybe supervisory groups, that may have access to only clusters of employees that they supervise. That department director or elected official communicates with me how they want that to be set up, and who they want to give access to which employees, and those supervisors then would work with those employee clusters to approve time, to review time in its clock, and therefore, we'll be able to close weeks then once all those approvals come in. But we have to build all the accrual balances, set the accrual rules for those employees, and establish who those users will be, and who will access each particular employee within that department. Then once we get that set up, then we can bring the department on and allow them to clock.
One of the reasons, at least according to what I remember, is one of the reasons that we decided to kind of tackle this kind of approach with the software system was a huge efficiency gain for the departments that were manually keeping track of all of the time and all of the accrual rates. So I'm hopeful to hear what the departments might say after they're live and everything is kind of settled, to really notice that efficiency gain, so we'll see how that goes well. I know that was definitely an interest of the court at the time.
Absolutely, and the system, once the accruals are built and loaded into the system, then once the department goes live, the system accumulates and accrues on its own. So that relieves the department from that responsibility.
So the stages are working pretty well for our department?
So far, we're moving on. We just brought on the second stage, and I don't anticipate a great bill. Probably haven't seen a lot thus far, so.
So the national team are waving their hands, like, maybe we can go through this. Thanks. Do we need to have any action on this at all, or maybe we'll think that's okay? Item six, Sherland Utilities Donation, and it's to consider an act upon the acceptance of and use of donations from Sherland Utilities, Commissioner.
Nearly two months ago, that we got Sherland Utilities here to make presentation on. There are transmission lines that go through the north part of the county. At that time, she mentioned that when they constructed those towers, there was always leftover metal and things, and so they gathered that up and recycled it, sold that back, and so then there's some monies that they have given counties that these transmission lines go through, just as a donation to use as we'd like. I think Potter County is about the last county that has not accepted that donation yet, and it is a $5,000 donation, and some of the other counties have used it for county libraries, just whatever we choose to use it for. But anyway, in order to get the money, we kind of need to decide to accept it, and then how we'd like to use it.
Motion to, on the first floor, acceptance.
Yes, I'd move that we accept the $5,000 donation from Sherland Utilities.
It's a move and second to accept the $5,000 donation from Sherland Utilities for Potter County. Those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero. And to the next order of the direction of any suggestions, I think?
I think there's a lot of places we could put it, a couple ideas, maybe three. But one of the things that, and I don't think we're ready to use it that way first, but this is an idea I just wanted to throw out here because at some point we'd need to address it. I was approached by a citizen who lives in the county outside the city, and because they do live outside the city, the city library is charged them $18 a year to be able to use the library. And at one time, of course, I've talked to the city, and the city said at one time, the county used to give $1,000, whatever, dollars towards that, and then the citizens of the county could use the library at no cost. I've talked to the city, they have not given me a final answer what it might cost us if we would reopen that, because at some point we could give them that donation, not a donation, but a payment to the city. So I think that would affect a lot of people, that all of our citizens could use the library. So that's one way, but I don't know what kind of money we're talking about, so we might want to look at something. The other thing, our volunteer fire department always can use some money for equipment to send their volunteers out to fight fires. And the third idea I had was possibly the Sheriff's Citizens Academy, to bring citizens in, gives them a 12-week training, both for adults in the spring and in the fall, they do students, so.
One suggestion I might add is the Employee Appreciation Committee, Commissioner, that you sit on. You know, with a dollar size like that, it may be nice to get each employee a little something. I don't know what that might be, but that might be a nice little increase to that budget that I think is definitely an opportunity to recognize all the employees who are in Potter County, just an idea.
I don't think we have to put all the money in one pot, just grant to different areas.
Well, first of all, we have acceptance, so that's a bigger load, a little outweighed. A question, Dave, at what time did we, do you have any recollection of when we stopped the contributions to the city of course of the library? That seems like a heavy one.
I think that's, I don't know, I mean, as far as I know, we never have done that, so it may be a little long. I'm not aware of any, 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 judge, I see the judge shaking his head too, so that's, that's a long time. That's between all three of them.
That's what the law uses, right? And as you indicated, that can be spread over a number of different situations, so that's basically good. Is there a drop dead date on when we need to decide on the allocation of those one?
I don't know that there's a drop dead date, they just have to, we use whatever.
Just pull up the suggestions, now we just take that till the next meeting, and then we have those on which direction we want to go. And I want to simulate this, those suggestions that I, do you have?
What time did you mention it?
I mentioned Act of Life, and then getting some kids involved in Act of Life. And only costs like 25 bucks a kid to get involved, and they have mentioned it before about the county helping out, and they will pay for these kids that can't pay for themselves, so I think maybe we could drop some money out there. Just one opportunity.
Only just, my ideas in the next meeting we decide. All right. Item number seven, equipment purchase, it is to consider an act upon the purchase of an ECO lawn top dresser spreader in the amount of $5,020 from Profits Lawn and Leisure LTD Limited and in transfer funds within the facility maintenance budget as per the requirements of the auditor. Good morning, Mike.
How's everybody?
Good.
Sorry, the top press machine is something that, it's one piece of equipment that the county does not have, that I would like to add to it, as there's a variety of purposes. We basically water, and it also, it also provides longevity and performance. Do the lawn, to keep looking, which is good, now, definitely near. We have funds available throughout the budget. Do some things, obviously, move some things around, but make some things work, and probably listen to those available. Funds will be sufficient for the remainder of the year.
So that doesn't, everybody have a report for the treasury report, and banks?
We didn't need to repass, but money gets currently in Brown's maintenance budget and need to cap.
Carrie, what is the line item Profits Lawn and Leisure LTD? The way it's written is, is that to be purchased from this, it makes me indicate that that is the line item?
No, that's the vendor.
The vendor, to be purchased from that vendor, okay. And is there a reason, since it's over $5,000, that we're discussing it now instead of during budget time?
It's just prime time of doing it, it's not anything I've ever asked for. The unit was, I never knew about the unit up until a couple of months ago, and started learning about it. It's available for, you know, normally for like large commercial jobs, but this unit is something that we can bring to the fleet and start utilizing it here. If we hadn't professionally done what we're asking to do, we would probably get two performances before we could purchase our own piece of equipment to do it. So it's just a learning curve for some of the guys and for myself, I've not done it in over a year, so.
What would this equipment do, just from my own lack of knowledge?
It's, throughout the process of spring lawn care, whenever you do a aeration, there's several different reasons why you do aeration, it's to lessen compaction, it's also to introduce oxygen and water to your soil. And after you do the aeration process, you like to top dress, and it's something that golf courses do with their greens. Every once a month or so, they go in and they top dress the greens to lessen the compaction, and also to improve the filtration of water and oxygen throughout your root system, so. It's just.
You top dress with sand or compost or something?
Yeah, in the areas that we're trying to level things out, we use sand. In the areas that we're trying to revitalize nutrients to the soil, we will use black top soil.
And does this process, I'm assuming, help with the traffic that walks across the lawn?
Yeah.
And it will support that, or make the impact of the foot traffic, decrease the impact of foot traffic?
Your foot traffic actually has more compaction than any piece of equipment we could put on the lawn, so the more people walk on it, the more compact the surface is going to be. And whenever you get compaction, you get, you start to adding up the ability to create fungus and hurt the damage to the yard, so this is just another step to reassuring that that lawn is good.
And is there any maintenance that goes along with this piece of equipment that we need to be mindful of for the budget?
As far as mindful of the budget, no, probably not. All the maintenance and stuff will be done in-house on that. We won't, we try to do all the maintenance ourselves as much as possible, unless it's just gonna really affect the performance.
Let me, excuse me, let me address that, to go back to your question, Commissioner. Within our budget, we set aside funds for our tree program. Nick has done a great job of getting trees put back on this property, kind of at the end of the point right now, planting trees for this year. This is some funds that was left over, and you've got a yard out here probably worth about a billion and a half dollars. So that's why Nick is wanting to take care of the yard in this piece of.
Any questions from the court?
One final question is, will there be a training class or a seminar? You guys know how to use the equipment today, is any of that included in the vendor contract?
No, it's not, it's not, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
There is a YouTube video, I guess I should have, it's on our T V's, or anybody can see. But no, there's no training required.
Good, there's a move to approve the purchase of the ECO lawn top dresser spreader in the amount of $5,400. It's been properly seconded, those in favor, show hands.
Commissioner, I'm just gonna say, I think the motion also needs to include the budget transfer, is that correct, Carrie?
That's right, the transfer to Major Chief Cal.
Is that correct, Judge, except for your budget, State General Operator, the Capitol?
Get that, Julie? So noted for the correction to the motion, and second, those in favor, passes five zero.
Thank you, Charlie.
Item number eight, it's a chiller maintenance contract, it's considered an act upon awarding a contract for the Santa Fe Building Chiller Maintenance to TD Industries in the annual amount of $13,600 from TCPN contract number R-5-0-5-5.
Our chiller contract on the Santa Fe Building expired into this month, and on Monday, it will be without coverage. And so through this process, we received quotes from our current company, which is Johnson Controls at the 17 through 20, and then this new company, and I say they're new, they're new to us, but they've been around a while, TDI Industries, and obviously their costs are a lot cheaper, so I think maintenance is comfortable with them and the quality of service they'll bring to the county, and so we're recommending to go with the 13 through 60 to be able to save the county a lot of money.
Seems to save about like $4,000 by one.
Okay, so moved and seconded to approve of the purchase, question to court?
I just have one question, Mike. I'm assuming all the service levels, everything will stay the same?
Motion on the floor, and seconded, those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero. Item number nine, is your water formal bid number 1-0-8-6-1-4, and it's to consider an act upon awarding formal bid number 1-0-8-6-1-4, Santa Fe Building Elevator Chief Repair to Advance Elevator Incorporated in the amount of $36,755 as the lowest and best bid.
This was, this is for the repair of car number 3-2 at the Santa Fe Building. We brought this a couple of months ago, I know Mike has talked about it a couple of times here in court. We did put a formal bid out with the specs that our elevator consultant broke for us, and we received three bids, and again, Advance Elevator is low, and I think for Mike's recommendation, and also the elevator consultant, we couldn't find any reason not to use them, so that's our recommendations.
And these beds be so different?
Honestly, if I had to give my opinion on that, the Tiss and Crump, they're the ones that originally turned in a proposal to Nick, valued it there right there. We went back and reevaluated the word. I think they just put a lot of money in there to cover themselves. They're not gonna budge. The Shanner Corporation, I think they're a little skeptical also. The advance group that you have right there, that actual contractor has been around the block a time or two, they know what they're doing. It's the older generation that is used to working on this type of equipment, and these other two right here are using younger technicians that do not have experience to do this. They got a lot of time and stuff built into this. One of the biggest issues on this would probably be the lead time, if you've noticed right there. Advance is a little longer than the other two contractors. I would probably say that they kind of cushioned right there, because something can always go wrong when you work parts of this type right here from Hollister Whitney, special made parts just for this project. I still feel comfortable with Advance due to the, due to the supervision that built this project, the older generation has done this type of work.
Mike, the one line item that catches my attention is the overtime rate, the disparity of that. I think Advance has 650 overtime rate versus some of the other vendors, one being as low as 185. Do we monitor that? What are our internal controls?
Nobody is allowed to perform any overtime work without any written authorization from the cell. We were controlled of that. This is just, if it just really had to happen, it was an urgency or something like that, I do not allow it to come to work overtime. We currently, if you recall, we're down to just two elevators over there. This right here, we'll get the elevator number two back in operation, so we can move toward our modernization.
Commissioners, you would agree this is a little bit of a transfer as well, the district courts will open the maintenance accounts?
I think we had $108,000 that as of last week. That is one of our largest accounts, I've had projects in there just to money, in case something does happen. Whenever I brought this to court last time, that was one of the requests, you know, that we need to do. Instead of increasing anything, I just asked that you take it out of our district courts, go with the count. So instead of increasing anything, I just ask that you take it out of our district court's bill of account transfer.
I make a motion that we accept formal bid one zero eight six dash one four to Advance Elevator, the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and funds to be transferred from the district court's construction account to Santa Fe Construction Account.
What's the elevator?
Elevator. Maintenance.
Okay, you made that, you made that request to the elevator.
The maintenance, district court building maintenance account in Santa Fe.
Commissioner?
Not long ago, we, seems to me like we did sign a contract or something with Tiss and Crump. And when we done that, just agrees?
It was the service, that was the annual, annual service.
No, it was an amendment to their contract to allow us to bid this work separately. So we legally didn't use them to...
We're not stepping on that contract.
No, we're still giving them the opportunity at completion.
Okay.
Okay, motion, uh, alright, from the floor and seconded to approve of the transfer of funds from the district court to the elevator fund in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Second, those in favor, show hands.
Judge, where, judge, where this is not making any...
Okay, passes five zero.
Item number ten, to award a formal bid number one zero eight five dash one four. It's to consider an act upon awarding formal bid one zero eight five dash one four, audiovisual service contract to F Plus Media Solutions as the lowest evaluated bidder.
I want to give you a quick history of why we even put this bid out. Currently, whenever we have an audio video project such as the TVs in the courtroom, a, uh, a, uh, audio system for a courtroom, we go out and get quotes for each different vendor. And because our total spend for the year is over fifty thousand, we've never performed a bid out before. And what this is doing is causing a patchwork of systems across the county. Um, and so Nick and I kind of talked, as well as Jason, about getting a standard company to come in that we could use for, I think, the contracts for two years and then options to renew for up to five if we want to. And that way, as they do repairs and as they replace equipment such as security cameras, anything else, it's all standardized over those five years. So hopefully, we move the county into one big system that everything matches. I, I know audio video has kind of been passed from facilities to IT and maybe kind of back. I don't think there's one technician that has quite the expertise to run a big project by putting in a security camera system. And so what this does is it puts one vendor on notice, kind of like our electrical contract, maintenance contract, our plumbing maintenance. So when we need a security camera system, we can call them to come do the work. And they'll know what we already have and they'll hopefully put something in that's standardized across the county. And so that's, that's what the bid was for, that's why it was released. Um, we received four responses. Um, you, you in your packet have the tabulations. There's a lot of cost factors that goes into a contract like this because it's time and materials. So, um, if you look through that, we created seven jobs, just like we did with the electrical contractor. Um, we put the cost model to those seven jobs and added those up to get, to get a lowest bidder. And through that process, AB Plus was that low bidder. We've checked their references. As I said in the recommendation, they are a new company to the county. But they've done work with Baptist St. Anthony's, with Emerald College, with South Plains College. And everyone I've talked to is very impressed with them as a company, didn't have any problems. They came out that day and worked with them. And, and the owner of the company is here too, if you have any questions.
So the lowest and you didn't include the word best being, of course.
Um, well, the lowest meeting all specifications. I, yeah, I think, I think, I think they'll do a good job for the county. I don't have anything to say that they will.
And just a side note, I certainly appreciate the cost model. I think that's really a strategic approach of what it will mean in terms of real dollars to the county. So I know that takes a lot of work, so thank you for that. Um, Jason, is there anything that you'd like to add from a technical perspective? Is your department oversees audio and visual or has that recently changed? I've heard a little bit of difference.
It's been a hodgepodge, depending on the project and the building and all that sort of thing. And that's one reason that we're looking at having an outside vendor come in is because, just what David said, we end up with a, you know, with this duct tape and bailing wire systems across the county. This will enable us to standardize things, so I'm on board.
So the honor was here this morning?
Yes.
My name's Dwight Hanson with AB Plus Media Solutions. We've made a commitment to, to the community and, uh, technologies that have been answered in the last ten years. And, uh, and have been good service to the county and so forth.
Have you been in Emerald a lot of times, Dave?
Yes, I've been here since ninety-two. I came, um, as a, I left California in nineteen ninety-two. Was looking for a place to settle down. I've got my wife here, trying to set something up there. It's one of my branches.
Yes, and from the sense that you're out here and you're growing.
We're growing as a company. We have, uh, seven employees. That we're, we're evaluating a seventh employee right now. L two technician, I call that a level two. Take care of all the things that I have to be doing. I need to transition my expertise more to design and then engineering. So my technicians would be able to, we're, we're experts in cooking better implementations where you don't end up with the duct tape and bailing wire kind of hodgepodge of equipment solutions.
What's your address?
My address is...
Where's it located?
Four thousand two Business Park Drive. Down there in the western Business Park.
Um, just a follow-up question for Jason and Mike. And so just to piggyback off of a comment that you said of kind of this hodgepodge system. So taking into account if the court moves forward with one vendor, who will oversee that project? Who will initiate the call? Who really kind of owns, um, a line item that, you know, could get costly in the future with technology? I'm still not understanding that.
Let me, let me say something first. Years ago, we took care of that, we took care of that back of Jason, our private Jason coming on. The IT director at that time, we gave control to then. So they took care of all the camera systems. Then Jason got involved. Nick is a gentleman that's been working with Jasons and everything. I think it'd be more of a joint venture, I presume, between maintenance and IT department in order to address this issue to where we work together and bring any issues back to the court. It can be very costly and I agree with the comment made, you know, by Jason. We have a hodgepodge of so many different camera systems throughout this county and everything. Uh, I have one request for y'all. Let Nick take care of this. From my perspective, the response time, what is it if you get a call and you have to come out? Y'all may already know this answer, I'm just curious. We have, excuse me, we have courts that we have to deal with. For the moment, if a judge requires somebody to be there, we've got to get somebody there real quick.
We're committed to our response on, on emergency issues and twenty-four hour on miners.
And really just a word of caution, as I see us moving towards this vendor model, um, I would like to think that we're taking advantage of internal house expertise before calling a vendor at kind of premium dollar. Or will we still be doing that? I'm assuming some of that expertise resides in IT to troubleshoot, you know, obviously kind of a technician one. I may not be calling it the right thing, so certainly forgive me. Uh, but what my, my point of caution is that we're always calling a vendor when there's expertise that we have hired internal to troubleshoot that.
I would assume, and of course, we haven't discussed this in detail, but I would assume that the first call is still going to be to our help desk. Uh, I know that that's how it's been.
Sure.
Or I put this way, I know that we get phone calls. And you guys may also get them. And we'll try to resolve them. Obviously, if it's cable, we're gonna go plug it back in, that sort of thing. It's, it's a matter of, this is more, my understanding, this is more for new projects, new installations, that sort of thing. They're gonna involve both of our departments. But then we have an outside vendor we can call and we, we know we're always wanting to get System X, whatever that is. You know, put in whatever building.
And our team would be a part of the new project and really helping with that manpower, if you will, if you will, from a technical end of what we can do in-house. Um, Carrie, for the budget line item, to my knowledge, we don't have a line item to speak to this type of maintenance. Where does this fall?
Uh, and Jason and I have kind of discussed the way I need to do some, you know, uh, technology related line items. So can I discuss adding one item that's not specific?
All the questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
You're taking the motion?
Prove.
Second. And properly moved and seconded to, um, award the visual service contract to F Plus Media Solutions at the lowest bid designated at, uh... Two hundred million dollars. Those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero. You get that duly? And then we'll try to confuse you with trying to...
Yeah. I just looked at it.
Skip to item twelve, employment items. It's to consider an act upon the following employment items. Rowan Briggs, some resignation of Richard Moya, uh, maintenance technician, effective April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. You want to take these individually or all together? Okay, all together. Uh, ID, uh, Rowan Briggs, in form of Jeff Jerry Miller, Summer Moore, effective May fifth, two thousand fourteen. And I have C, information technology, in form of Brandon Putnam, network engineer, effective April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Make the motion that we accept the employment items as presented?
Second.
Okay, the motion is on the floor. It's to accept the employment items as presented also.
Yeah.
It's properly seconded.
Can we have a, we've got a couple that...
No, no. Notes in the pack, yeah.
I'm assuming we can't take action on them since they're not listed?
I think we can. It's just an employment item. I don't, I'm just getting proper there. I mean, the agenda item gives you notice that we're getting considers. So it gives a public notice, you're considering employment items. And that's, if they're interested in that, their purity and the detail, I think, is, is, is not that much of a difference here, Mike, that we put it through that.
Do you see any issues? We're gonna have some, uh, questioning on this and...
I will, I will have questions.
Okay, let's go ahead and take these first three items that are listed on the thin item, those A, B, and C. Motion's on the floor to approve and also seconded. Those in favor, show hands. Okay, passes five zero. And to your point, Dave, uh, we'll just list them as, uh, those B and D. We'll include that in the, uh, on just that A.
Yeah, I think that, I think that will be fine.
Okay, item D.
I think they're the last two in the packet, can we share that?
Okay. Item D is like it's the maintenance. Got six two.
And another reason we're coming to the bottom of that two is the way the main two items are just approvals of salary increases. And I, I think that's, you know, I think that's the primary journey of causing insurance wise transfers.
Okay, it's like Brandon, item, uh, the employee is Brandon Harrington, is that correct? Title position would be system administrator for the IT department. And the, uh, it's like it's actually a salary increase for outstanding work in the, uh, in the amount of sixty thousand eight dollars for the year beginning May first, two thousand fourteen. It's like the funds will actually be positioned move from eleven three zero, uh, two three zero to cover the increase, uh, to twenty, two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and... Sorry, want to speak to that? Do you have some questions on this?
Sure, well, they're actually both employment items really echo one another. Um, and I have visited with Jason and more, let me just say, certainly not the employees because I think all of our employees are extremely valuable at this county. Uh, but the process of moving funds from one position to the other to offset increases. Uh, to my knowledge, the majority of the counties do not allow these fund transfers, you know, from a salary line item. And I continue to see huge disparities within departments of income ranges. I personally have a concern with the salary amount and again, not the people and the expertise. But this aligns with some of our directors that have certainly been at the county for quite some time and are pay scales on a director level. So I do have concerns with transferring funds. And again, I think both of these gentlemen are extremely capable, um, and certainly warrant that. But there is, there are concerns with this continuing to happen through this county, from my perspective.
Anyone else? I noted agreement with you, by the way. And we've been, been speaking to that point for an infinite time and really haven't approached out there to set a drama to exactly where we are and where we should be. That needs to be included and I think that's an item that is going to have to be inserted for the budget that is forthcoming. Anyone else, Commissioner, you have some issues, some concerns or questions?
Well, is Jason back?
Yes.
Yeah, Jason.
How long have these folks been with us?
Uh, Brandon's been here like five years. Uh, and the other gentleman's been here almost a year.
Let me include Rick Lewis, that, that Rick Lewis is a network engineer for IT and a salary increase of sixty thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars for outstanding work. And note on the, uh, to use our funds move from position to one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Position number eleven three zero, uh, two zero zero to cover the increase of the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy-two and...
Was that position eleven thirty?
Two hundred and zero.
Is that position been eliminated?
Now, that, that position, part of restructuring the department, let's just say, a couple of junior level positions, senior positions. And, you know, as, as folks, you know, as the folks up here move on, move out, that sort of thing, these folks want to take on some new skills and sort of thing, which I'm very interested in. And that's, this is part of the process. The net effect to these two guys, I mean, after the fact is their take on pay is gonna make a difference about a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
But I think it does, I mean, um, speaks to the process and again, certainly not these two individuals. And so for me personally, these are always difficult conversations because I think inherent, the, the people factor becomes the primary discussion when it is not the people, but the process and this salary range paralleling with some of our directors. Um, and so, you know, I think that's part of what our commission does, is take a global look at what's happening to employees across the landscape, if you will. And, and just a follow-up comment, hey, not to put you on the spot here, but I'd be very interested from the Texas Association of Counties, maybe Michelle's expertise. I know she's done some HR consulting forums and some recent seminars of how other commissions are handling this. Um, because what I've been told is this is not allowed as a general rule throughout Texas. Now, again, that's secondhand, so I want to validate that. But it would be interesting because we've been dealing with this at least since my tenure on the court. I can certainly reach out to Michelle and communicate with her and get her input.
Dave, you want to speak that? I know that you had some expression...
I was, I was smart on the part that I've told many times that we do things different for the counties and state.
But there's a cost to that.
So, so I, that's what I'm gonna say until I ask you. So, so I, that's what I'm going to say until I ask.
You're always allowed to, to put your comments, Dave, smart on your mind.
It's my understanding that you can move budget money within the salary block, but you can't take money for maintenance and move it up to salary.
Well, and I think, one thing that, I mean, to me, legally speaking, I talk about transfers, and I talk about amendments, and if you wanted to, if you wanted to transfer money from one position to another, in other words, like a budgeted position already, that's, that's, that is not a budget amendment, so I think that's, you can do that. And now, it's a little complicated in the personnel area, because the commissioners do have, have more authority over, you know, employment positions, so like, you know, like, if someone wants to create a new employment position, commissioners have to approve that, whatever the department is, so it, it gets a little more complicated than that, and so commissioners do, do need to approve changes to some degree of salary, but I do think it's permissible to, to move that money around, with, with, with just, it does require court approval, because it's just a, a transfer of money. You see what I'm saying? Doesn't affect a lot of line, it just, we're just moving money from one pocket to another.
Well, and I think this commission would be surprised of the huge disparities in the departments, and I think this is just part of the process, and with salaries being the biggest line item of our budget, for me, not really knowing this formal process and what it should be, and we could do better, I guess, is where I'm thinking.
I will add one kind of practical consideration, I know that every, not every year, but, but we will often talk at budget time about, you know, about the need to do that, and the, and the time to start addressing that, and this budget is right now, because we're going to get, we want to avoid, we've had times in years past when, when we've actually kind of disrupted the budget process by trying to kind of all of a sudden reach to it, and so if you want to do that, now's a good time to get started with that process.
I agree, you mentioned that we would target this budget here for that express purpose, so yes, I think that's, that's good, that's what we need to do, is look at, and how would we go about doing that? I know in past years, had some type of survey that was, was put out in, for this county of its size, but throughout the state, and certainly we would need some guidance from TAC also, in that manner, they do the shell to.
I think, I think the salary survey you're referencing is well over ten years old, if I remember right, I think Scott showed that to us at one point, I, I'm going to say as old as twelve years, but I'll say ten years, just to be safe. So I, I do think the time is, is really prime, and if there, if there are resources at TAC, that I continue to kind of learn about what they offer, really free to us, and I think, from my opinion, it would be a good sampling of what other counties have done, and how they have handled this, this issue, but really, also, I'm, I'm sure I'm not going to call it the right thing, Kay, is salary kind of control points, this position is maybe entry level here at this dollar amount, but it really has a control point of what the max is, if you will.
A salary structure.
Salary structures, Robert.
It's my understanding, and I haven't checked into it recently, but it's my understanding that TAC is not actively involved now in a salary survey, but that some of the other counties have gone out in more recent years and done that, but we could certainly go out on the serve and ask the questions and see, and also check with TAC to be sure where they are with regard to salary studies within counties and.
Or even insight to help us establish our own process, and really, to Dave's point is, Park County is very unique, and so we know that, you know, if there are resources, then they can come in-house to help us establish that salary structure.
A salary, an in-house, homegrown, if you will, salary study could certainly be done, but be mindful that it would be a huge undertaking, it would be a very tedious task to, to look at everything and, and place it. If there's a study that already exists with, with similar counties of our size, it, to me, it would make more sense to feedback on that, there's no need to reinvent the wheel if there's something out there, I'm, I'm not familiar with what's actually out there right now.
If you do the salary, excuse me, if you do the salary survey, you need to have the elected officials, department heads, of all, because we're the ones that knows employees' job duties. We have done two, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, we've been through two salary surveys within the last twenty years or so, and we established the job descriptions, we, we compared ourselves to county of our size, Tom Green, everybody compares Potter County to Tom Green, here's an example, maintenance department of Potter County is nowhere close to the maintenance department of Tom Green County, our job duties are totally different, we have more buildings to maintain than what they do, so there's a big disparity right there, just in the job.
I, I agree, and I, I think we need to step out on that and get some, some guidance from the department, and if, if anything from similar counties that have already grossed out in that area, certainly had, and TAC, whatever, they might be able to, to help us in that, and, and, and that manner, I think that'll be a good way to go. But for the, for the, what is the interest of this, this court in respect to the item D and E on the, on the items? Do we want to look at, you also have, you have a little help, as far as, I guess, advocating for those increases in salaries?
Yes. I'm trying to figure out, hope we're trying to get kind of a salary survey, because we're trying to get all positions at the same level, I think we're really missing the boat, because like we just talked about, there's different responsibilities, there's different demands for IT workers that are really good compared to other positions in the county, so I, I don't know, it really makes it harder if we have to say, you know, there are department heads that aren't getting sixty thousand dollars, but these IT guys don't deserve it, I don't know.
No, I don't.
I'm having a hard time.
And definitely.
In that square.
Commissioner, if I may, I definitely want to say, I, this is not that the employees do not deserve it, and so again, for me, employment items are always difficult to have this conversation, because everybody deserves it, quite honestly, in this county, so it's definitely not that, and my perspective is more of a salary structure, I think salary survey is a terminology we use and everybody is comfortable with, but I'm, I, I, I think I would like to see us to get to somewhat of a structure.
I, I agree, and I think that also we have to focus on certain specific skill sets of those in the middle, particularly in those departments, certainly would be different than, and I'm not going to name the departments as far as their, their expertise, but certainly there are specific skill sets that are unique to remain that would be different, and that certainly would have to have some considered thought as far as addressing this structure, and it, it, it's past time that we get started on it, and so, you're right, I think it's going to be a very tall system, and I think that we need to include all department heads and all elected officials in this, but I think we need to move on and start setting some kind of boundaries and, and as far as a foundation of where we can go from this point.
So, the idea of looking at all of the positions with regard to what they actually do, and the appropriate salary placement for those positions, that is what we're talking about, or what, what I mean when I'm talking about salary survey and salary structures, because you're right, as you might, all of those things have profound impact on how that structure ends up, what it looks like at the end, and we would absolutely need full involvement from department heads and elected officials to, to be able to, to define each position, to ensure that it's placed accurately within that structure.
Let's settle this point here, D and E first, as far as where we are in this.
How do these particular salaries compare to those of the people in the county or in the city of similar work?
Our, the folks in the city have a considerably, this skill set, we're talking with these two guys, they're making less now, even after this little increase than they would if they worked in the city or for the current board. It's been, and that's just in part of the public sector, obviously, they put private sector, they make a lot more. And like I said, this is part of restructuring effort to get, you know, to get, to get this department, I said, I can't speak to what other departments have what they do, not responsible for that, responsible for my guys, to set up a structure where we've got some senior, you know, tenured, senior type folks, and we've got entry level positions, and when, you know, this is part of that, this is basically taking a couple of guys that were almost there, and they've been there, and they're already there, they've been through certification classes, they've done outstanding work, I get compliments from sheriff, department heads, from, from everybody, these two guys, so that's why they got.
I don't have any hard ground or any in, in this request, because it is looking at a specific skill set, this is not to undermine the department heads, the directors that we have who I forget, but we do know and understand there are specific drug requirements, and again, underlying that skill set that very few would have to maintain their commitment to part of the county, so I don't really have an issue with looking at that, this increase at this point, I know, I want to, as, as an amendment to that, for us to move out on this structure issue that we've been talking about for another year, so, having said that, any more questions?
I want to make a motion that we accept the increases for both these departments.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the increases for two employees for IT, in the mountains, already been questioned, do I need to review that? Okay, those in favor, show hands, those opposed, passes four one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. James.
All right, item thirteen, Park County projects, to adjourn report on various Park County projects and to take any actions necessary.
No, this is just a verbal report. Is the cuiticle panel working?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hello. We have completed everything, we went through punch league, punch list last week, we're looking next Monday, Tuesday to correct the items. Shortly after that, around a bit, may I have the Texas Historic Commissioner on her wall through with me, and then we'll stick to supplemental funding, and we'll create a common table, work with county. Second category will be county courthouse preservation, just to make you aware, out of local contractors, we had thirteen items originally pending, I'm working with the last of the local contractors on replacing all of the cement or caulking on the center of our building, on the roofing levels, we have found out from the manufacturer that the project had actually failed, so our ERSEC is still involved, even though we don't have to do it two years later, and the local contractor, I'm getting this work completed, could we have any, any?
No, where does that put us? I'm curious, though, where does that put us on the list of?
We have nine items remaining, after we complete this local contractor, biggest dollar item is your millwork right now, going to replace all this millwork in the building, we have some painting to be done within the building that was not part of our paint contract, or somebody else's fault, yes.
What about the, wasn't there an open item in the basement? Remembering that correctly? I don't have my notes, I can.
Item number one is your elevator floor that's cracked in here, we noticed it before we moved into the building, you have four warranty items that have to deal with nothing but millwork from Julie's area, to all these counters here, to all the new millwork throughout the building, you have tieries up on the physi door southwest, hot jet area, where we've had some plaster damage up there, D and O Raymond had some plaster damage, we have three of those areas that need to be repainted.
How about these?
Yes, sir, that is part of that. That's, I'm waiting on the airbag and journeyman, we cannot do any of the remainder scopes beyond what I'm currently doing right now for local contractor without journeyman.
And they received our final payment, is that correct? Journeyman has received our final payment. Are we just waiting on them to respond to that?
No. I'll wait, I'll, I'll, they shall.
Okay.
They've now, they, I, I, they have not responded, they've been given the, I've, I've got the letter back in case they receive the notice that we required to give. Basically, we asked, I could, I could tell you this without worrying about any kind of legal confidentiality, the question to them was, hey, we're required to go to mediation, and, and we have some issues that are not resolved, and we need to go back to mediation, unless, if you don't, if I don't hear back in a certain amount of time, we're going to assume you don't want to go mediation, you're claiming that, but we've got an offer person, so I have not heard back, I'm assuming that they are declining, go back to mediation.
Does the amount of time expire when we need to hear back from anybody?
Actually, I don't know, I, I think our, as far as performance bond, we believe our time runs out in June. More time than that, on warranty, we have more time, the actual warranty plan depends on what kind of claim you want to make, but as far as performance bond, that time, get the company involved in that, that time runs out in June.
You know, many future projects, Park County does, I suggest, please do not face a true contractor until we have a warranty, it's a big issue. Next item is on our hail damage on the emergency scopes of work, Santa Fe building, we are gearing up to do a complete replacement with thirteen deck up there, that's, we just have a few items remaining. Santa Fe, I mean, Sheriff's Office project, we have completed all the roofing over there, we're waiting on manufacturer inspections and site cleanup. The non-emergency projects, we had fourteen original, the commissioners courted your last meeting and had five others for the request of the tri-state fair board, being the north and south public restrooms, I'll go ahead and give you my opinion right now. I'll give you a written report, but the roofs are old, they're worn out, no real signs of hail damage up there due to the type of gravel roof it is, that gravel roofs is what they ought to put on a lot of buildings in these areas. The maintenance barn out there, used to be the sheriff's department, I would not, I would not crawl out, it's rusting out so bad, you can stand in ground, but you can see all the rust up there. We did check the structure beneath it, what we attempted to do, that the structure is good, it's just an old roof system. Here's what was unusual, Campbell one and Campbell two, being at the northeast area, right north of the Glenn Mack area out there, and the buildings has been in question, we looked at these two buildings out there, Campbell two, being further north of those buildings, did receive some damage, one directly south of it, Campbell one, between it and the Glenn Mack, very little damage, so I mean, something apparently happened out here through the past, it's going to point true, so I'm just making aware of that, I'll give you a written report on that, we're currently awaiting the insurance. The correctional facility kitchen, late night project, I'll be bringing you a final project conclusion here at the next meeting, we completed all work out there, we're currently performing punch this time, has to be corrected at this time, waiting to close out documents. Fire station three, I will go to executive session, I'm out here in a little bit. The XL Energy Wheat Bay Program, that you approved at the last meeting, this is where we agreed to bring in a sponsor, I have visited with this sponsor regarding this project, the buildings that are eligible, you have to have a cool roof on top of it, being your C O five membrane, your T P O roofs, these white roofs, and they kind of went a little further there, so we've got a lot of properties that were thought to be considered and will not be considered. I'm going to start with the Santa Fe building, was hoping to claim every roof on that building, you can only claim a roof when you have an air condition in our, in the, in our series, it's not all five, so we're only eligible for two roof levels on that entire building, we will be eligible to file for the LED lighting retrofit that we're looking to do, and the future elevator modernization on the motor itself there. The sheriff's administration, the only area we'll be able to do is the north portion of the roof project over there, and then the district courts is still an unknown whether or not they're going to do it, because the areas that were recovered over there recently, were strictly over mechanical elevator areas, the description of what they consider as permanent. The description of what they consider as permanent, uh, air conditioning is still up in question right now, how XL interprets. The, uh, recommissioning program with XL, I'll be, uh, starting that within this week to give them the background.
We don't want the dollar amounts will be, uh, or any anticipation?
On rebate.
Amount of the rebate?
Not until they come in, I'll have to give them all of the complete information, all of our equipment that cools that area, chors, like to get exchanged, I got to give them all this information, work with them to where they can establish how we can get a savings back off, just that footprint of just the, it's going to be a lot of work just to figure that out.
And you're saying the footprint is, um, really a lot less than we thought when you brought this to the court?
Due to, we got into the requirements last week with Mr. Purcell and, um, there's a lot more stipulations right there, you have to do this, you have to meet these requirements.
Thank you, Mike. Item number fifteen, the jury call is five fourteen, ninety-three females, eight of them are housed and children. Uh, any insurance item?
Nothing.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, item number eleventh is, uh, executive session, that is, uh, as on our agenda, this is a real property, it's for fire station number three, and it's two items, we leave that to A, to hold an executive session to deliberate the purchase, exchange of value of real property where deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiations with the third party, the third person pursuant to F five five one dot zero seven two, it's code, open code. And item B, to take any action appropriate, but after the executive session. So at this point, we will adjourn to the omnis conference room for executive session at ten ten. We're reconvening from executive session at ten thirty-eight, all right, AM. In the matter of the executive session, real property for fire station three, court met an executive session and have agreed to authorize the deliberation with the clientele from the purchaser.
And that's all. Joe made a motion. Yeah, we need to take some, actually, no action, we need to take it in the session, but we do need to have a motion.
Yes. I move that, uh, Potter County Commissioners Court authorize our purchasing agent, Dave Harder, to negotiate with a, uh, third party in regards to buying land for the, uh, fire station number three.
And it's been moved and seconded to, um, move forward, uh, with the allowing the purchasing agent to deliberate and negotiate with the third party in respect to purchasing land for fire station three. Those in favor, show your hands. Okay, passes five zero. And any, um, executive sessions, uh, for this meeting? Other than that, uh, any agenda items or issues?
Yes, I do have an issue with item number twenty-six. I asked last meeting if we have the tiers board of directors appointments replaced in the agenda and it was not. And can we have it by the next meeting? Who's going to take responsibility? Let's have someone do it. I'll go ahead and I'll add this to the agenda. Okay, and I'll also put Sherry later back on, so we can discuss that, too.
Okay, anything else from the court? This might be the twenty eight, if not, court ends in, in a turn. Thank you very much.